This meeting will come to order. Hammond City Council, public hearing, March 26, 2019. Call to order, roll call please.
Councilman Kip Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wales.
Present.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Public hearing, number one, an ordinance for a rezoning request by Plantation Management Company LLC to rezone Block 10 of the Barber Edition located at 800 South Oak Street in accordance with survey of R. James Tatum dated 1/22/1998 from RM 2 to CN, recommended approval by Zoning Commission Tracy Chalacy.
Good evening, Council. Our zoning commission recommended approval for this rezoning. It's an existing nursing home, the Heritage Manor. In the process of them selling the property to another business, they realized the zoning doesn't conform with this current use. So, we're just a little cleanup work in rezoning this property to meet the current zoning that it requires.
Any questions of the council? Is there anyone here on this issue to discuss?
Our two new business owners are here. Do you have any questions for them?
Anybody have questions for the business owners? Let's be clear which property it is, just so everybody understands where this is.
It's on South Oak Street, which if you pass up Z Mary and you keep going straight, it's the Heritage Nursing Home, God bless you. It's huge. It's massive.
And are they putting something different there or something new?
Actually, it's gonna be more for elderly psych patients, kinda on the same level that it is now.
It meets all requirements for commercial zoning, correct?
Yes, it sure does. We actually brought to their attention that the current owners have a dumpster and a metal container on a side street that we've asked them to remove, and they've agreed upon that.
Any other questions, any other comment? All right, number two, an ordinance to adopt and establish a tax on all the taxable property within the corporate limits of Hammond for year 2019. Jenny Wilson.
Good afternoon. Well, just a quick synopsis of everything. The millage rate is adopted each year. It's by state law that we do this. And the breakdown for the millages, we have fire and police, 10 mills, that has already been voted in by the voters, a 10-year tax and will expire 2020. The 2-mill public improvement is a 10-year tax that has been passed by the public and will expire in 2025. And then the other 9.04 mills is generated by the Constitution. It doesn't have to go before the voters. So that brings you to your total of your 21.04. And we're just asking that it be adopted this year.
Thank you for providing a good summary, since this is our first time passing this one.
You're welcome.
Any questions by the council? Anyone here from the public with comments or questions? All right, thank you. That'll end our public hearing. We'll move into the regular session. Roll call please.
Councilman Kip Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wales.
Present.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
I ask you to all stand, and we'll have a prayer led by Councilman Andrews.
Most gracious, lovely, eternal heavenly Father, we just thank you for today, for this is the day that you've made, we rejoice and we're glad about it. Father, we just thank you for your darling son, Jesus, who died upon the cross that we too would have access to the Tree of Life. On this evening, dear heavenly Father, my prayer is that everything will be done decent and order and pleasingly in your sight, where you would get all the glory, you would get all the honor, you would get all the praise. And Father God, we just thank you, because without you, we are nothing, and we give you thanks right now for it all, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Now, for the Pledge of Allegiance, I invite all veteran and active military to please render the proper salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which stands, our nation under God, in the discipline of liberty and justice for all.
All right, reports, council reports. Anyone from the council have something they wanna report at this time?
On April the 6th, from 10:30 to, I'm sorry, from 10 o'clock to 12:30, we will be conducting a neighborhood cleanup in District 1. Those residents that live in District 1, we're trying to come together to put pride back in our neighborhood, take care of those sites that need to be taken care of and remove a lot of trash. So, I'm asking those of you that would like to come out and join it, don't live in the district, we invite you to come out on that day as well. Again, that'll be next month, on April the 6th, and we'll meet up at Martin Luther King Park, and we'll start our way around the district from there.
Anything else? I will say that I've had a couple of comments from people saying there's a lot of street work going on, so commend the administration for getting some much-needed projects done, especially over there on East Charles Street. Happy to see that going forward. All right, the mayor report?
Madam President, and council, we have some national champions in the house, some young ladies who've worked really hard, and everyone's very proud of them that went to Florida. And we have a proclamation that we're gonna read for you. And then, if you would, I know, I think we have some that need to leave to go to another event, so I'm gonna try to run through this and get a picture as well after. Proclamation reads, whereas the Holy Ghost Catholic School Cheerleaders attended the 2019 UCA National Cheerleading High School Championship in Orlando, Florida. And whereas Holy Ghost Catholic School Cheerleaders were awarded first place and were named the World Champions in the Junior High Non-Tumbling Division. Whereas Holy Ghost Catholic School Cheerleaders placed first and were named the National Champions in the Junior High Game Day Tumbling Division. And whereas Holy Ghost Catholic School Cheerleaders were awarded second place in the Junior High Non-Tumbling Division. Now therefore, I, Pete Pettipinto, Mayor of the City of Hammond, ask the citizens of Hammond and surrounding communities to express pride in these young athletes and thank them for a job well done by bringing honor to their school in the national championship competition. Come on up, I'm gonna take a picture if you would. Councilor, Madam President. Uh, I hope we have someone taking a picture off here, maybe. Congratulations.
Okay, y'all, I'm gonna do two rows. So somebody may want, yeah, you may wanna get down on these on the front, and then line up on the back, and then we'll put the council members in the back. All right, so you're this way, so that we get centered under our seal. Councilmembers, y'all find your spots.
Yeah, that is, we're all casting a picture, we'll be looking forward to it.
All right, everybody ready? One, two, three. Moving on, is there, are there any new businesses in the audience that would like to be recognized? All right, then the minutes of March 11th, 2019, need a motion to approve?
Make a motion that we approve those minutes from our March 11th meeting.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Minutes, we need to approve the amendments of March 12th, 2019, I need a motion.
Make a motion that we approve our minutes from the March 12th meeting.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
All right, we'll move on to resolutions. Old business, number one, an appeal of Spencer Rossi of decision of the Hammond Historic District Commission denying his application for relocation of the properties at 207 West Morris Avenue and 211 West Morris Avenue. I wanted to give just a general format of how we're gonna do this, as I understand it, there haven't been any appeals of the historic district before. So, first, we're gonna have the historic district commissioner, Jenny Garcia, come and give the council some overview of the application and the property, and then the review of the application, and any information, the final decision of the commission, and the rationale for the decision. Then we'll have, allow for questions by the council. Following that, we'll have the applicant, Mr. Rossi, or his representative state his opinion, I'm sorry, his position, and then we'll allow for questions by the council. Then we will do public input, and then a final, a final time for the applicant to provide any final thoughts. So, first, Ms. Garcia.
Hi, I'm Jenny Garcia. I'm the Director for Hammond Historic District, and the Hammond Historic District Commission consists of seven commissioners, who were not only charged with local city ordinances to preserve and maintain the historic district, but also charged with Louisiana State Enabling Legislation for Historic Preservation Districts. So, before we review that, I just wanna touch base on some of the local, or the state enabling legislation that we are charged with. So, state law 731 states that the purpose of the historic preservation districts is to promote the educational, cultural, economic, and general welfare of the public through the preservation and protection of building sites, monuments, structures, and areas of historic interest or importance through their protection, maintenance, and development as historic landmarks, and their recognition as such in the history and traditions of the state and nation, to establish and improve property values, and to foster the economic development of the areas affected. This is also reiterated in the Unified Development Code with ordinance 8.1.6, the purpose of historical district. 737, the powers of the historic district commissions. No private building, structure, or edifice, including fences, boundaries, walls, signs, light fixtures, steps, and paving or other appurtenant fixtures shall be erected, altered, restored, moved, or demolished within a historic preservation district until after an application for a certificate of appropriateness as to exterior architectural features that has been submitted to and approved by a historic preservation district commission, except as otherwise provided by the governing body in the ordinance establishing such commission, or as provided by rules, regulations, policies, procedures, and standards adopted by said commission. B, a historic preservation district commission shall not consider interior arrangement or use, but shall consider the relationship of the exterior of the buildings concerned with all others in the historic preservation district as to avoid incongruity and promote harmony therewith. C, a historic preservation district commission shall adhere to and seek compatibility of structures in the historic district in terms of size, texture, scale, and site plan, and said commission shall set forth and define guidelines prior to any exercise of its authority. State law 742, applicability of historic district commission powers. It is the intent and purpose of this chapter that the regulatory powers conferred by it on a historic preservation district commission created under its authority shall apply to all private property in the area controlled by it, including all building structures, area sites, and their adjuncts and appurtenances insofar as they constitute part of the entirety or toot ensemble of the historic section. Any governmental agency of the state or local government other than the governing body having a responsibility for any building, structure, area, site, public way, and their adjuncts and appurtenances within the historic preservation site shall seek the advice of the historic district commission prior to the initiation of any substantive change, modification, renovation, restoration, or construction. State law 746, review by governing body or authority and by courts of actions of constitutionally created historic preservation district commission's right to compel. Number three, district means a designated or defined area of a municipality placed under the authority of a commission for purposes of historic preservation. Four, essential assets means, A, the quaint and distinctive character of a district, B, the value to the community of the buildings having architectural or historical worth in a district, and C, the public trust placed in a commission or in a governing body or authority by the Constitution for the preservation of A and B. Five, essential duties means to, A, preserve a district for the benefit of the people of the district, the municipality, and the state, B, prevent the quaint and distinctive character of a district from being interestfully affected, C, protect the value to the community of the buildings having architectural and historical worth from being impaired, and D, ensure that a reasonable degree of control is being exercised over the architecture of private and semi-public buildings erected on or abutting the public streets of a district. And seven, defining the quaint and distinctive character of a historic preservation district includes but is not limited to the historic or traditional ambiance of the district, the antiquity of the district, the historic toot ensemble of the district, the old-fashioned or traditional neighborhood quality of the district, and the lighting and traditional architectural styles and details of the district. Now, Hammond also has the Unified Development Code, which also reiterates a lot of this stuff. 2.1.6 defines the Hammond Historic District Commission is identified as having the authority to enforce certain provisions known as the Hammond Historical District Design Guidelines within the legal boundaries of the Hammond Historic District. Establishment, the historic district commission serves as a historic quasi-zoning commission for the City of Hammond. The general authority, the Hammond Historical District, shall have for its purpose the promotion of the educational, cultural, economic, and general welfare of the public through the preservation and protection of all such building, sites, monuments, and structures of historic interest or importance through their protection, maintenance, and development as historic landmarks, and their recognition as such in the history and traditions of the state and nation, to establish and improve property values, and to foster the economic development of the areas affected. Final authority, with respect to this development code, the Hammond Historic District Commission is responsible for final action regarding applications for a certificate of appropriateness in accordance with Chapter 8.1 and Appendix E of the UDC. So, the rules and regulations for the historic district in the UDC 8.1.5 says the commission shall make such rules and regulations as it may deem advisable and necessary for the conduct of its affairs, not inconsistent with the laws of the city and state, and that's really important. 8.1.7, the definition of the historic district. So, the definition for the historic district states, the following area of the City of Hammond is hereby designated as the Hammond Historical District to wit, beginning at the corner of West Morris and South Spruce Streets in the City of Hammond, and then running northerly along Spruce Street to its intersection with West Charles Street, and then easterly along West Charles Street to North Magnolia Street, then northerly along North Magnolia Street to West Robert Street, then easterly along Robert Street to North Cypress Street, southerly along North Cypress to East Charles, easterly to North Cherry Street, and then southerly to East Morris Street, westerly along East Morris Street to South Magnolia Street, then southerly along South Magnolia to West Hanson Street, westerly along West Hanson to South Spruce Street, then northly along South Spruce Street to the said point beginning at the corner of West Morris and South Spruce Streets. The historical district above designated shall include all buildings, sites, or lots, and all structures, houses, or other buildings facing any of the streets on the perimeter of the area. 8.1.17, provisions of chapter prevail in case of conflicts. The provisions of this chapter shall govern and take precedence over any other provisions of any ordinances or codes of the City of Hammond. Now, the two houses located at 207 and 2 West Morris are depicted on a 1930 sandborne fire insurance map for Hammond. Architecturally, these houses are known as minimal traditional cottages. However, this house type is also known as an American small house, warriors cottage, victory cottage, depression era cottage, economical small house, and the FHA or Federal Housing Administration, administrative housing. The American small house is not only a significant local history house type, but it is a significant national history house type. These houses set the stage for the idea of homeownership and defines what we know today as single-family housing. Prior to the 19th century, only well-established families could own a home. This was due to the fact that only those who could buy a home outright could be homeowners. By the early 20th century, moderate-income families were able to own homes through organizations that offered installment plans that required small-down payments and a modest monthly payment. Some such organizations were real estate developers or mail-order companies such as Sears and Roebuck. By the 1920s, short-term loans were available to homeowners. These loans required annual or semi-annual interest payments and a balloon payment of the principal after three to five years. Oftentimes, homeowners had to refinance periodically and typically carried second and third mortgages. The system only worked during times of prosperity. Successive years of economic decline led to the development of the American small house, or as we in Louisiana call them, a minimal traditional cottages. No matter the name used, these houses were developed in response to three factors. One, the need for low-cost housing during the succession of desperate economic times. Two, an unparalleled national response to these housing needs that involved unprecedented collaboration of the federal government, the building industry, architectural and engineering professions, building trades, university extension programs, building code officials, and home loan finance institutions. And three, a clear national goal of providing well-built, well-designed, affordable, small, single-family houses. This house type was a well-studied and thoughtful response to the most challenging conditions to ever affect home construction in the United States. With the work progress administration, architects desperate for work after the 1930s turned their attention to the design of these small houses. It was of the highest importance to design the most efficient houses since every square footage added to the overall cost. House plans and pattern books for small houses featuring minimal traditional cottages were published, and these books often included careful descriptions of the FHA loan programs that were available. The broadening of homeownership and creation of a system of mortgage credit enacted several federal laws and programs that encouraged homeownership. Starting in 1932, the Federal Home Loan Bank Act created a federal home loan bank system that established a credit reserve and authorizing member institutions, primarily savings and loan associations, to receive credits secured by first mortgages. This is the first step in organizing a system of mortgage financing that remains in place today. In 1938, legislation created the Federal National Mortgage Association, commonly known as Fannie Mae, to buy and sell mortgages from member institutions, making additional money available for home mortgages. With the federal government's involvement of creating laws to encourage homeownership and to stabilize the housing market, a national program was created to regulate home-building practices for many decades. These regulations were written and published in the FHA's Principle of Planning Small Houses, Property Standards, Recent Developments in Building Construction, and Modern Housing. In the earliest of these publications, Planning Small Houses, five FHA house types were illustrated to show range in comfort of living. Floor plans and simple elevations were illustrated, and each type was void of nonessential spaces, picturesque features, and unnecessary items that would add to their cost, following FHA's principle to provide a maximum accommodation with a minimum means. Hammond was not immune to the national trends of this time. The Great Depression and the decline in the strawberry production impacted the city, and was the only time the population declined. Following the economic decline of the Great Depression and World War II, Hammond's population and housing market began to bounce back through the federal government's laws and programs that encouraged homeownership. Federal laws such as the Servicemen's Readjustment Act, G.I. Bill of 1944, allowed returning veterans to access affordable mortgages and stipends for tuition. The two houses located at 207 and 211 West Morris Avenue are examples of this history. In 2017, the Hammond Historic District applied and was awarded a grant to conduct a central Hammond historic structure survey. The goal of the survey was to survey approximately 1,400 buildings with photographs and a Louisiana historic resource inventory form to update the national register boundaries and period of significance. The grant application also noted a need for the survey due to some notable losses to Hammond's architecture. At the completion of the survey in June 2018, 1,245 structures were documented. Out of the 1,245 structures, only 87, or 7%, were identified as minimal traditional cottages. So, in February of 2019, the historic district received an application for relocation of the two buildings located at 207 and 211 West Morris. This was in response to the denied request for demolition. The historic district denied the January application for demolition as the request goes against the guidelines, state, and local ordinances, and does not support the authority of Hammond's historic district, which is to promote the educational, cultural, economic, and general welfare of the public through the preservation and protections of all such buildings, sites, monuments, and structures of historic interest or importance, through their protection, maintenance, and development as historic landmarks, and their recognition as such in the history and traditions of the state and nation, to establish and improve property values, and to foster the economic development of the areas affected. The historic district has been reviewing these properties since December, when the city received a permit request from Walter J. Miller. Prior to reviewing the application December, I emailed Spencer Rossi on December 14th to reiterate that 207 West Morris is in the historic district, and that as was stated in December's working session, he will need to follow our guidelines. That state demolition of a structure is an irreversible step and should only be pursued if there is no viable way to save the building. Every possible alternative must be exhausted before demolition is considered. A formal application was not filed, as the applicant was not sure if he was wanting to demo both properties or just 207 West Morris. The commission simply reviews the proposal and tabled the application for the next session, as more information could be collected, so that the Louisiana State Historic Preservation Office could be contacted for further assistance, and precedents could be considered for the redevelopment of the property. After the December 19th commission meeting, I contacted the certified local government CLG Coordinator at the Louisiana State Historic Preservation Office. The CLG Coordinator did answer one important question, what are the impacts of removing historic structures from the historic district? He stated that demolition should be avoided at all costs. When I asked him if moving the structure to the front of the property to allow them to be converted into duplexes, and allow the property owner to build a small duplex in the back, he was also adamant that this would also be inappropriate. According to the CLG Coordinator, any changes to the structures could result in Hammond losing its historic designation and tax credits. I also have an email dated from January 9th, 2019, from the CLG Coordinator stating that he spoke with Spencer Rossi over the phone. He explained to Spencer the importance of the houses and told him they should not be moved. The CLG Coordinator also explained that their setting is part of their historic integrity. The CLG Coordinator stated that Spencer is determined to move the houses, and thinks he can give them to a man who will dismantle them and rebuild them. So, in February, we received a formal historic district application for the proposed relocation of the two properties located at 207 and 211 West Morris. The applicant was requesting a move and relocate both buildings to 42260 and 42276 Warren Drive in Ponchatoula. This proposed work would be done by Davy Shoring, an experienced house-moving company. The relocation and moving the two buildings would allow the applicant to redevelop the property to include four new residential duplexes. Spencer's representative attorney, Jennifer Lee, was again representing Spencer at the commission meeting. The applicant's attorney states that they have previously submitted plans for the proposed Georgetown Row redevelopment that will consist of four buildings and eight units for residential use. The applicant's representative points out an email from then-national register coordinator, Jessica Richardson, who suggested that a smaller-scale development with one to two stories would be most appropriate in terms of the site's relationship to the historic district. The applicant's attorney is referencing a January 4th email to Spencer that was provided by him to the historic district. What is left out is the mention, and I quote, "that these two buildings are pretty good examples of what is called minimal traditional houses from the 1940s. And based on your photos, they do appear to have a lot of original features intact," end quote. She goes on to state that these two buildings have historic value. While she also says that she understands that not all historic buildings can be saved, even though her email does give valuable information to the applicant, such as the historic significance and a sandworm map, it is not up to the national register coordinator to decide if a historic building can be saved. It is up to the historic district itself to make that determination. In the February application, a structural assessment was submitted. This assessment was conducted by Warren Davy, the owner of Davy Shoring. He completed a thorough assessment of the building's condition. The structure of both buildings have been examined and found to be sound and in good condition for proposed moving. Floor joists and sills show no signs of deterioration or rot, and remain straight and true. Attachments appear to be in as-built condition. In summary, both buildings meet the full criteria of acceptable conditions to be moved. This statement from Warren Davy shows that these two buildings are in excellent condition, and as stated in the guidelines, a historic building should be moved only if all other preservation options have been exhausted. Relocation often results in a loss of integrity of setting and environment that compromises the significance of the relocated building. Since both buildings are in excellent condition, and all preservation options have not been exhausted, such as rehabilitating the buildings, relocating them does not make sense. They also do not pose a hazard to the public safety and general well-being of the historic district. The applicant's attorney does address preservation and rehabilitation. The applicant's attorney does address preservation and rehabilitation of the houses. She states that they are around 1,000 square feet, and each building has four rooms and a half-bath, which is a toilet and a sink only. The original intended use was for residence, was changed a long time ago. While the intended use from residential to commercial has changed, there is a full bathroom in 211 West Morris. If you know the history of the homes and you know that they were required to have a minimum of two bedrooms and a one-full bathroom, among other requirements. These minimum requirements are part of the federal initiative to provide single-family homes with modern conveniences. The applicant's attorney also states that because the buildings face the Historic District, then they are not in the district per se. This is also not true. If we reference state law 746, the essential duties means to, and I'm just going to jump down to D, ensure that a reasonable degree of control is being exercised over the architecture of private and semi-public buildings erected on or abutting the public streets of a district. This is further defined in Local Ordinance 8.1.7, definition of Historical District, which states, "The historical district above designated shall include all building sites or lots and all structures, houses or other buildings facing any of the streets on the perimeter of the area." The Commission also recaps the working session where it was discussed there is a limited inventory of this particular house type within the Historic District. If the relocation is approved, once it is moved, it is no longer protected and loses its significance. In essence, the Historic District will be losing its historic stock. The Commission reiterates that this proposal sets a precedent that is worrisome, and we have to be careful of that. Just allowing for a building to be moved because it is inconvenient does set a bad precedent, and we will have to weigh this very carefully. These buildings are not just under our jurisdiction, they are actually part of the ordinance and part of the Historic District, not just under our purview. The applicant also submitted three letters of reference to support the work of Davy Shoring. The first letter submitted was written in 2007 and only shows credentials for Davy Shoring as a house-moving company. In 2007, Davy Shoring moved two historically significant buildings in Abita Springs. Since the relocation of these buildings, they have been delisted from the National Register of Historic Places. The removal of a historic building from its original setting can mean a delisting from the National Register database, loss of protection from its associated Historic District, and a loss of potential historic tax credits. The second letter submitted was from the Preservation Resource Center of New Orleans dated June 19, 2018. This letter outlines the, the moving of a single shotgun house to a vacant lot. The house that was moved was a Katrina cottage and not historically significant. The third letter was also from the Preservation Resource Center dated July 17, 2015. This is a letter of support for preservation work conducted by Davy Shoring. The house mentioned in the letter is in fact historically significant, however, it was not moved. Davy Shoring provided the work free of charge to stabilize and provide structural repairs for the Preservation Resource Center. Another historic house is mentioned in the letter, but this one was not moved either. The house also received structural repairs and remained in place in its original setting. Once the two buildings at 207 and 211 West Morris are removed, they are no longer protected and lose their historic significance as American small houses. Mr. C.C. and I have been working hard trying to figure out the development of the site in regard to the Historic District Guidelines and zoning ordinances. One of the concerns was what are the Historic District Guidelines for developing on the site for new, for new construction? The guidelines state new construction setback of the proposed building must be consistent with the setback of adjacent buildings or nearby buildings fronting the same street. The distance between the proposed building and adjacent buildings must be compatible with the spacing between existing district buildings fronting on the same street. Using this information that was provided, the redevelopment does not fit. The other item that also needs to be addressed is if these buildings are moved and rehabilitated on another location after the applicant is saying that they are not rehabilitatable on their current location, then why are we moving them if someone else is going to rehabilitate them elsewhere and use them for single-family homes? The Commission also brought up past requests to demolition of property, such as when the property owner wanted to tear down the J.C. Penny Building that is adjacent to the Columbia Theater. There was also talk of selling the Columbia Theater for its bricks, and the Historic District failed the proposal, not even knowing exactly the future use of that building. There is concern of the precedent set if we allow these buildings to be removed. The precedent being set is one of the big problems. The Commission denied the application based on the shared and expressed concerns of the Commission and the rules and laws of the Historic District that it violates.
The Council have questions for Ms. Garcia.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
I think it's important to create a record.
Okay.
So if, if Ms. Garcia submitted information to the Council, we might want to be sure that's a part, trying to be sure that's a part of the record. And if you read something, have you, did you supply that to the Council, which you read from?
No, but I basically just...
So if you could just create that, submit that, since you read that from that text...
That, that would have been come, that came from your...
Yeah, I didn't want to read 77 pages.
She, she read from the report she submitted to us.
But I can also submit a copy of this.
I just want to be sure all of this is in the record of the Council.
Yes.
So Tanya, we'll attach what, what was submitted to the Council by Jenny.
I do, I actually have one question. So the, the homes are not on the national, the Hammond National Register Historic District, right? They're not in that?
Right.
Okay. So you said something about when properties are moved, they're delisted. That wouldn't apply to this.
That wouldn't apply to that because it's not listed, it's not individually listed.
So is there some entity other than the Hammond Historic District Commission which has said these are historic in nature?
Well, other than the State Historic Preservation Office.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Ms. Lee?
Good evening. Jennifer Lee, Representative for Spencer Rossi. And a lot of the information that Ms. Garcia has gone through, I'll not repeat that. We're appealing the denial of the application to relocate the homes at 207 and 211 West Morris. And I want to give you a little bit of a background on both the houses and the applications. The houses, we researched the Tangierbo Parish Assessors' records, and we found that these houses, and also some historical records from just their family. Spencer's grandfather owned this property, and it's been in his family since, you know, probably the 1930s. In 1935 and in 1939, George Rossi, who is the applicant's grandfather, built these homes for investment purposes. And like Ms. Garcia said, they are minimal traditional houses. They have a plain design and no architectural significance, and they are analogous to today's tract homes, which are designed with affordability in mind and not necessarily architectural design or materials. George Rossi was drafted into the military in 1943, and he served until 1945. So she gave a great history lesson about the importance of the style of home and why they were important for the country to promote homeownership and also following the war to veterans. This style of house is similar to those homes that were built after World War II to encourage homeownership, but these particular homes were built before World War II and before George Rossi ever enlisted. They were built for investment purposes, and they are not example of the history provided by Ms. Garcia. Neither George Rossi nor his family ever lived in these homes. Again, they were investment properties. The Rossis plan to carry on George Rossi's legacy with their new Georgetown Row development. So kind of to reiterate the, the chronology of the applications that were made, starting in December, Mr. Rossi began talking with the Historic Commission. So that means this process has been ongoing for several months. He initially started talking about demolition. That was tabled. On January 16th, he kind of revised his plans to not build two, six duplexes, but instead reduce that to four and to demolish the two homes. That application was denied. And at both meetings, the Historic Commission suggested relocating or renovating the homes. On February 20th, again, the application was made to relocate the homes and build the duplexes, and the application was denied, and that's what we're seeking, we're appealing. So the basis for the, for Mr. Rossi's appeal is two-pronged. One, he's aggrieved by the HDC's decision, the Historical District's decision. And two, the Historic District Commission's decision is inconsistent with its essential duties or purpose. So number one, he's aggrieved by the Historic District Commission's decision. The UDC, as Ms. Garcia stated, that it provides appeal rights for anyone, any applicant who's aggrieved by any decision that's made. For three months, Mr. Rossi worked with the Historic District Commission to present a plan that's accept, that was acceptable to it. Besides preserving, renovating, or selling the houses, which is another suggestion that was made, why don't you just sell it to someone? The Historic Commission suggested on multiple occasions that Mr. Rossi relocate the homes, even outside of the Historic District, though within the Historic District would be preferable. And at one of these meetings, I specifically asked that question and made that distinction. Mr. Rossi followed the recommendations of Historic District Commission after each meeting, including assessing the houses and the site, meeting with multiple investors and house movers, and reviewing the UDC's guidelines, design guidelines. He went through an exhaustive review and process for months of how the houses could be preserved, relocated, and reused so that Georgetown Row could be redeveloped, developed in their place, and further enhance the Historic District and downtown Hammond. He secured an experienced home mover and preservationist who has a national television show and references, including from the town of Abita Springs and the Preservation Resource Center of New Orleans, which is Davy Shoring, as Ms. Garcia mentioned. He provided details about where the houses would be relocated, and Mr. Davy even appeared before the Historic District Commission at its work session. Mr. Rossi positively met the intent of the Commission's factors described in its Design Guidelines relocation section, and it met the guidelines for relocation. Besides complying with those guidelines, the construction of Georgetown Row would improve the property values and foster the economic development of downtown Hammond, as described in the Hammond UDC. Despite this, the Commission denied the application and refused to issue a certificate of appropriateness permitting relocation of the houses so that the Georgetown Row development could proceed, citing its fear of setting a precedent. Mr. Rossi is aggrieved by this decision, and he requests that the Council reverse the Historic District Commission by allowing relocation of the homes. Now, a point that Ms. Garcia made was whether the plans would meet the review and whether they would meet guidelines from the city. We're, this is kind of a chicken and the egg type situation, and they have asked for a presentation of just renderings, not full-scale construction drawings, but site plans, et cetera, to show what the properties would look like. They asked for that on a Wednesday at one of the work sessions, and Mr. Rossi rushed around to get that drawn. So we presented that of what it would look like. We know that the full plans still have to be presented to the Historic Commission for review and approval, and any changes that need to be made, Mr. Rossi has expressly stated that he will change. He will make any changes necessary to comply with those rules. So while they may not meet it now, and they will, they can. Secondly, the second basis for our appeal is that Mr. Rossi feels that the Historic District's decision is inconsistent with its essential duties or purpose. And Ms. Garcia cited the purpose, the UDC's purpose of the Historic District Commission is promotion of the education, cultural, economic, and general welfare of the public through preservation of, quote, "structures of historic interest or importance." And I will not waste your time going through the rest. That's one prong. The second is to establish and improve property values, and the third is to foster economic development of the areas affected. We'll go back to the first. These homes are not structures of historic interest or importance. They are historic in that they're old, but they are not, they don't have historic interest or importance, they don't have unique architectural style. And by refusing to allow relocation of the homes and development of the site, the Historic Commission is not following its charge set forth in the UDC. It's not promoting the educational, cultural, economic, and general welfare of the public because the houses have no historic interest or importance, and they're not historic landmarks. And they are also not meeting the charge that it's been given by establishing, it's not, by establishing and improving property values. Instead of allowing a million-dollar-plus development on this site, it is keeping two old 900-square-foot houses, and it is not fostering the economic development of Hammond's downtown. So a brief survey by Mr. Rossi and me of owners, tenants, and/or businesses at 24 different properties, either located in the Historic District or surrounding the property in question, provided that they support relocation. And in case the Council wants to see that, I have signatures for all these property owners, tenants, or businesses. 24 different properties. So the Historic District's decision is not consistent with the purposes described in the Unified Development Code. Ms. Garcia also cited state law, which is virtually identical to the Unified Development Code, and provides the exact same things that it's charged, the Historic Commission is charged with preserving homes, structures, et cetera, of historic interest or value. Again, it is not following its charge. It's not preserving, it has no historic value or interest, so it's not following that. It's not allowing for increased property values, and it's not providing for increased economic development of the site for downtown Hammond. So Mr. Rossi complied with the recommendations of the requests of the Hammond, of the Historic Commission for months, only to be denied because the Historic District said its decision would set a precedent. He's met the Historic Commission's factors described in the guidelines, and the relocation of the homes and the construction of Georgetown Row would improve property values and foster the economic development of downtown Hammond. The decision is not consistent with what it's been charged to do, and Mr. Rossi asked for reversal of its decision, denying his relocation of the two homes.
How many, how many members are on the Historic Board? Do you all know that?
Six.
Seven?
Seven.
Okay. It was unanimous?
Yes.
That was all seven voted?
Yes.
The Administration, they appoint that board? Is that board appointed by the Administration?
Yes, unapproved by the Council.
Okay, all right. Do you all, I mean, just asking, do you all think we should defer to the board that is in charge of these issues or get involved in, in an overrulement?
That is up to your determination. The board's composition is similar to planning and zoning and other boards that specify. Those people have, I guess, a specific viewpoint in historic resources and architecture and whatnot, so, yeah.
And on that point, you know, you have seven people sit on the board and take their time to, to be on that board. And I pay the governor's goodness and kindness and hearts and are looking out for the best interests of the community. So depending on what you vote, how you vote, you know, I've had people mention, you know, we spend a lot of time, and we don't want to not help folks develop properties and what have you. So really, it's a, it's a heavy burden on you as well to make this decision, but you have seven folks that put their hearts and soul into doing, and spend their time to do it. And I realize that this is important to the family as well, to want to do something with these properties. And to some point, as a property owner and manager, I wonder, you know, why would you remodel these and just rent them out as rentals as well and add to it? I don't know what the, the property would look like if you could add to these houses. But anyway, it's a, it's a hard, it's a hard decision for you as well.
And, and I've said this before to the Commission, absolutely, I understand and we understand, they are, they are in a thankless position. They are volunteers, and they are very passionate about, you know, preserving the Historic District and preserving downtown Hammond. And it just seems that their focus, and I've said this, is on preserving property, period, but it's a little broader than that. It's preserving property of historic interest of, or importance, and there's also economic development and improving property value components that is also... development and improving property value components that is also part of their charge, not just preserve property, period.
That's your question. You said those houses are, they're not registered in the history of Louisiana, right?
Yes, sir.
So the houses are just old houses, and it was property that was built for money for only?
Yes, sir.
And so, what, Mr. Ross, that's your name?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rossi, so that's what he trying to do? He just trying to update the area?
Well, not my.
And yet, keep the old look, the historical, that they looking for.
Correct. And some tentative plans that were drawn and produced to the Historic Commission, the feedback was wonderful. The commissioners loved it. They, you know, they said that they loved the design, they appreciated that we attempted to maintain the historical integrity, et cetera. So they had no problem with the development itself, it was simply the homes that are currently there.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. Another question, too. You said you had got 24 signatures, right?
Yes, sir.
Could we see that, please?
Sure.
Yeah, and Ms. Lee, be sure if there's any other documents or anything you want to submit, that they also become a part of the record.
And I will pass this around for you to view.
No, I'm gonna give it back. I just want to see.
I would ask that it not be part of the record, because this may seem a little silly, but some of the owners of properties, historic properties, are honestly afraid because...
I'm sorry, but if you introduce it for us to consider, it should be a part of the record. I mean, if...
Well, I wasn't introducing it for you to consider.
You said, we have 24 people who want to move. So, I mean, I would consider that that's something introduced for our consideration. I mean...
One other thing, I thought you said that all the board was in favor of the development or not in favor, because earlier I thought you said they, I thought she said they weren't, or somebody said they weren't in favor.
They said at the December 19th meeting that they love the development, the project, the look of it, et cetera, not the demolition, dismantling, or relocation of the homes.
I thought you said earlier that the Commission had agreed to the relocation.
They never agreed.
They never agreed to the relocation.
Well, in our meetings leading up, in the December 19th meeting, and then in the January 16th meeting, several times, several different commissioners suggested, well, why don't you relocate it? Well, why don't you talk with a preservationist who specializes in this? Well, why don't you do this? So the suggestions were made, and the suggestions were followed. But when it came down to the February application, it was denied.
I guess I'll go back to, I don't understand why they were, why they were suggesting the relocation. So, you know, you said the Commission was unanimous, all seven members, but seems like, well, it sounds like some of them were in agreement to relocation.
You're, I mean, this is the same questions that we have, and...
Ms. Garcia, I mean, did you have any comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't want to go through all the meetings.
No, just a simple comment. I mean, were some of the members at the original meeting in favor of relocation?
Okay.
We stress every time, so, you know, there's, we can read the votes, and why can't? We need to show us why we're not really building this district.
Okay, you have the meeting minutes that were provided from Ms. Garcia in your packet, and I can reference the page numbers, and I can tell you where it was said.
We also did a public records request and got all the recordings from the sessions. Conveniently, the conversations about having the houses moved are not in the minutes.
That's not true.
There's in-depth conversations about having the houses moved that are not in the minutes. So those conversations were had, where they encouraged us to have the houses moved. When we brought the plans back to have the houses moved, we thought this was the resolution that everyone was looking for, and then it turned out to get denied. When we thought we were willing above and beyond to make these resolutions, the historical issue was looking forward.
So at the December 19th meeting, and these are not exact quotes, but these are pretty much paraphrased from the minutes, Ms. Seals, Shawna Seals, requests additional information from the 13 professionals who assess the houses for moving, and she requests that each professional provide a written assessment showing the cost associated with relocating the two houses. Ms. Jessica Shirey stated that a preservationist might have more information on people who would move the houses. She also stated that a preservationist might have more contacts for someone who would take the houses. Ms. Susan Seal stated that she's seen houses go down the road taller than that, and that was in a response to Mr. Rossi explaining the difficulty of moving these because of the high roof line. At the January 16th meeting, Ms. Susan Seal stated that she really liked the development, it's attractive, and he's done a lot to keep it sort of historical. What she sees looks wonderful, and she questions why it's so difficult to move the houses. Ms. Shirey said she has nothing against the proposed development, and Ryan Falk stated that the development is not the problem. He speaks about relocating the structure intact, even if you have to remove a portion and reassemble it, preferably in the district, but not necessarily in the district. So again, it's been talked about, talked about. Honestly, it seems that as we get to a certain point, the rules change. So it was, don't demolish, relocate. Then the application was, okay, we've found a contractor willing to relocate, we apply to relocate, that's denied. Now it's questioning the, whether the plans will comply with setback requirements, green space requirements, et cetera, of the Hammond's, of Hammond's ordinance. We're not to that point yet. We're not discussing whether those plans will comply, and they will go before the Historic Commission for approval before anything is done. We're only talking about this relocation application.
I've said from the beginning when this came up, I have a concern with, say this, say this appeal gets, this decision gets reversed and the houses are moved. I, this is my district, I, and I'm sure other people, don't want property sitting vacant. So you get the approval, and you move them, and then you have to go back to the Historic District multiple times, figuring out your site plans, your materials, whether it respects the historical nature of everything. So how can we be assured that if this is approved, this is reversed, if it's reversed, whether that is, we can make sure that those, that property's not sitting vacant for that long?
Mr. Rossi is perfectly agreeable to not removing the houses or touching them until the plans have been, redevelopment plans, development plans for the project have been approved by the Historic District Commission. And at that point, then they will be relocated. Until that point, they will sit there.
Can I, can I just say something?
Yes.
Because I don't appreciate being told...
Come, 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 talk to Mike.
I don't appreciate being told that I'm not doing the meeting minutes correctly. You can see how lengthy they are, and they are very close to what is being said, if not exact same words. I don't appreciate words getting put into somebody's mouth. In the meeting minutes, that is in your packet, it's on page 33 from the December application, Shawna Seals requests additional information from the 13 professionals called out to assess the two houses for moving. Shawna states the serious nature of removing both houses, and wants each professional to provide a written assessment showing the costs associated with relocating the two houses. Stresses that there are a series of things that must go through based on the guidelines before any approval can be made. Ryan states that there was a historic survey, and the circa built date was 1935, and the overlay district of the Thomas Morris area, there are additional qualifying requirements. Jessica states that we also requested more information on the renderings, and it's exactly the same that was presented at the working session. Susan says that we needed a site plan, which is now provided. Once again, Spencer clarifies it will be six buildings that are all duplexes. Jessica stresses that there are a lot of things that go against the Historic District guidelines, such as removing trees, and eliminating green space, and a variety of additional items from other categories, and wants to understand what it is we are discussing at this moment. Ryan states that it's not appropriate, that we are not approving what is or isn't going there at this moment, and that is a separate piece. Part of the decision is what you are planning to do. Scale, position, height, relevant to what is on the block and leading up to the Historic District, does not fit.
Ms. Garcia, I'm sorry, but the minutes are part of the record.
I know, but I'm just saying, I don't, I don't appreciate that.
No, I understand.
And then the other thing is saying they're not historically significant. This is part of a 1929 federal initiative set forth by President Hoover that was carried on by FDR after the war, 1940s. People are coming back, and there's a huge need for housing and to provide this for people in the nation. We are the only country that has done this. In Europe, they were focused on rebuilding and didn't focus on providing single-family houses. And that's what kind of makes it a little special. So I don't appreciate...
But these houses, but these houses were actually built before that.
Well, they were built around 1930, and the initiative started in 1929. And the war was ending in 45.
Okay, thank you. I think we're gonna open this up, because I did say we're gonna have public input. It's a public hearing, so anyone here from the public that wants to speak on that, please step forward. And actually, can I get a raise, a show of hands, who wants to speak? Alright, I'm gonna do a three-minute, three-minute time limit, please, so. Okay, whoever's first, go ahead, and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Dillon. I'm a partner at Seale &amp; Ross Law Firm right here in downtown Hammond. I'm also an owner of that building as well, with the rest of our partners that own it. I know Spencer personally, and I have had the opportunity to review the plans that he's, he has for that redevelopment. I've also looked at the property driven by it, and I'm in support of his request to remove those buildings. I didn't even know some of the information. I'm sitting back here, listening here today, and here, and Jennifer has indicated that they were built prior to the significance of what the Historic District is stating they were there for. So that is, I think, a very important point that makes me further believe that they should be relocated. I've also looked at the opportunities this will give that area, and also just our downtown in general. Just like the minutes reflected, the homes that he's building appear to fit in with the rest of everything that's going to be here, and I think that it will look nicer and be more presentable to, for the area as a whole. I think honestly, as well, that it really will provide some good economic impact, you know, to, not only just his family, but to the surrounding area. It'll help with property values, for sure. So I would ask that the Council consider allowing Mr. Rossi to remove those buildings from that property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Drew, 111 North Oak Street, local real estate agent. I do not know the Rossis, never met them. Jennifer asked me to look at the property and see what I thought as far as the historical significance and the real estate values of them. These properties aren't in the Historical District, they face the Historical District. If you look at the maps, the lines on Morris or on the north, they're not on the south. And I understand that the Historical Commission has some sway over property that faces the Historical District, and I can appreciate that, but what these properties face are parking lots. If you look on the north, there's a parking lot for the current police station, commercial building, nothing of any historical significance. There were buildings that were torn down so that they could put the parking lot there. On the west side of the property is a parking lot for Neal Corporation. There's no real significance to these buildings. Anywhere else in the city of Hammond, they would be torn down without even a blink of an eye. The only reason why there's a discussion about this is because they actually face the Historical District, and I would question whether or not that should be a legitimate thing in the first place, because I don't think property that faces the Historical District ought to be influenced by it. Either you're in the District or you're not. And if they want to pull those parking lots out of the Historical District, all of a sudden, these properties, you can do whatever you want to with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Melanie Ricketts. I live at 607 Joe Ferris Drive here in Hammond. I'm a local historian and also a preservationist. The houses, whether they're historic or not, is not a matter of opinion or taste, it's a fact. Buildings that are 50 years old are, and older, are considered historic. These small homes are endangered in the rest of the city. These houses being in the Historic District are rare because they are very few residential buildings, and Mr. Drew's correct, they would be torn down without a blink of an eye in areas like Hare Kate, where they are disappearing daily. If you drive down Morris Street, we lost an entire block of these small houses. And these houses have been viable businesses until recently. And I know that one of the tenants was very disappointed to have to move from the location. Those are the thing, the houses like that, and the tout ensemble, the fabric of the Historic District is what draws people here. And tearing something down that's authentic and creating something that's, you know, has an old look is not, does not contribute to the integrity of the Historic District. Those buildings are also included within the Historic District. Facing buildings are regulated, it's not a matter of what they face, it's the entire fabric of the District. So if they face a parking lot, it is a parking lot within the Historic District. The point of regulating facing spaces is so you don't have a historic, you have historic buildings and then skyscrapers or something incredibly modern, it's to taper down. So those buildings are regulated regardless of, you know, someone's opinion. They're also historic regardless of someone's taste or opinion. As far as the Historic District, there is always discussion. They try very hard to accommodate people, but asking to demolish buildings that are already, you know, that are viable, that are in the District, is something that is against what their, their charge is. Also, if the buildings are actually older than the time period, then they're more historic, not less historic. That is, that baffles my mind, why something older would be less important. But we are losing those buildings on a daily basis, and because we, the city has laws and regulations over these buildings, they are, they are important. And there are a lot of buildings that we haven't thought were important in the past, and we've changed our minds. You know, tastes change, and looking back, you know, we, we've torn down buildings that we regret. If you look at the old courthouse, I could kick myself for thinking that, you know, that's something that we lost that we could still have, but that's the way it works, and those things were put into place to maintain those. Also, the Historic District, if discussions, their discussions, what matters is what they vote on, and the votes were what they were. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Melvin McElwee. I used to be the former marketing representative at the Tanspo African American Heritage Museum, and also the president of the Louisiana Native Guard Association. You may have seen me work with the library, talking about history in different areas. And I can appreciate the Board's assertiveness on preserving history, but Ms. Jennifer mentioned three prongs, and she said the first prong is that something must have historical significance. If there is something presented by you all, the Commission, that shows there's history in that house, and we can find it written and relative, it has historical significance. It's not just antique. I don't hear anybody talking about that, even the family, unless the grandfather was a prisoner of war, and he did something great for America, and he lived in that house, it would have historical significance. In making your decision this evening, I'd like you to consider, remember there was a house over here that belonged to the first African-American doctor in the area? That the museum wanted to preserve that house. It had historical significance. I don't know who was involved, the city of Hammond demolished that house directly across from First Guaranty Bank. But I don't hear in this house that there's historical significance. It's just an older house built in a time that, hey, we do cherish, and the city of Hammond can preserve that look with future buildings. New Orleans and big cities do that all the time. In fact, I just left a building in New Orleans right off of Clayborne Avenue. A friend of mine, a major developer, bought the building and had no rights to determine what he was gonna do with the building, because the building was a part of Straight College, a historical college with PBS Pinchback graduated from, the first African-American governor in the state of Louisiana. And it was a part of that college, which is now Dillard College. And Dillard said, you cannot change any of these things, and this is how you must build the house. He received funds from international organizations to preserve that because of its historical value. I appreciate there are volunteers, I also was a volunteer myself on the Home Rule Charter Commission for the parish, and it's a tire... Commission for the parish, and it's a tireless effort. Continue doing what you're doing, but have you presented them with something that shows that this house is of historical value, other than just to say it's antique? You all consider that in your decision.
Any other public comments?
Andrew Gassaway, architect, number two ottoman place. Probably not too many people in there old enough to, I was actually founder of the historic district. Started a party one night, I met a mayor named Bobby W. Nakadish. At that time, downtown Hammond was dead. Two out of every three buildings was empty. East Railroad Avenue, brown door, red line, Steve probably knows that. That was all. The other end was empty. So, I went to Nakadish and met Bobby W., Mayor Sykes went with me. We got all the paperwork, came back, put together, we created the historic district for economic development, which is what we said. At the time we did that, we had some idea that maybe we would expand historic district. I think the only time it got expanded was to the west, I think. But the part about controlling the facade of the buildings that face the historic district, I'm not sure why we had that in there, but it has created some issues over the years. I know Hoover had a problem when he, where he has a sandwich shop, salad bar, with the sign, I think he took it to somewhere and got pruned. Now, we talk about setting a precedence. One block away, just one block to the east, was two buildings that was probably much more historic significant than these houses. One of them was the Studebaker Sales Building, had been probably built in the 30s. The other one was a Chevrolet dealership that later became the Daily Star. Five years ago, maybe six, Chuck, Chuck was part of it. Wipe them out, boom, no problem. We're going to wipe those out, because we're going to build new buildings. The young ladies comment about quasi historic buildings. Holly and Smith built a beautiful building, Steakhouse, look at it. Took the place of two historic buildings. That was much more historic. Now, then we fast forward over here to the Wells Fargo Building. It wasn't too many years ago when there was a house that was torn down, no question. Wells Fargo Building, built, beautiful building, Holly and Smith again. Back in the 80s, I bought two buildings down there, $50,000 each. Today, I don't still own a building. Where the suds and the beer, that building's on the market for $750,000. And just about any building you find downtown now is going to be in the $400,000, $500,000 range. When we started the district, you could buy any of them for $50,000. The point is, you have set our precedence, just one block away. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Do I have any time left in my three minutes?
No, I'm sorry, you were, you were like a touch over. All right, Jennifer, final thoughts?
Very fast. In researching this, I want to talk about this hammer, a plum hammer. It's my, my husband's grandfather's hammer, and it's probably from the 50s, maybe earlier. Looking at Plum's trademark, the trademark was first used in 1876, so it's really old. This one not per se. I see ads from the 1950s advertising the hammer, but I also see an ad right now on Lowe's, $9.98, you can purchase the same plum hammer with the fiberglass handle. My point in that is that it's historic because of its age. It's sentimental, and it's priceless to our family, but it, to everyone else, it really has no historic value. Similar to these homes, they're historic because of their age, they have no historic value or interest. They're not registered. They were built before the period that the Historic Commission references as important and post-war. Relocation of these homes is publicly supported by everyone who's spoken and also by other homeowners and property owners in the district and in surrounding them, surrounding this site. Relocation would allow Mr. Rossi and his family to build a new development, increase property values around it, and foster economic development of downtown. We respectfully request that this council reverse the decision of the Historic Commission. Thank you.
Ms. Lee, have you submitted everything to the council that you want them to consider?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we take this under advisement. Second, that a motion.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wales?
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
All right. New business. Number one, a resolution to accept drainage improvements fiscal year 2018 as substantially complete and to begin the 45-day lean period. Web, Chuck?
Hopefully, this will be non-controversial. Our drainage project, which started last summer, early in the summer of May, has finally concluded. Of course, the wet weather for four months has kept them from finishing, we'll now initiate this coming year, but where the web has handled this project would recommend substantial completion, acceptance, substantial completion, withholding 10% retainage and commencing the 45-day lean period on drainage improvements FY 2018.
Or, I'm sorry, questions? Anybody here to comment on that? All right.
Make a motion to accept. Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wales?
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, a resolution to appoint Kylan Douglas to the Planning and Zoning Commission to complete an existing four-year term that will end on June 14th, 2022. Mayor Penapinto.
First of all, Kylan, thanks for not looking at me and getting up and leaving, because the task, it can be daunting. Kylan Douglas is the ideal dream of most families for their children. We have Kylan's family here tonight, wonderful people. You know, you want your child, the dream in my head for folks who have their children that were born and raised here is to go to school here, as Kylan has at Hammond High and junior highs as well. To go off to college, Southern University, and get his engineering degree, be interned with Holly and Smith for summer, and then to actually not go off and do a job in Dallas, Texas, as my son did. To be able to procure a job here in Hammond and live here in Hammond, have a home here in Hammond, and one day start a family here in Hammond. So, to that testament, Kylan, thank you for accepting. I request to the council to please appoint Kylan to replace Mr. Stanley, who was on the DDB Board, the Planning and Zoning Board, and I appreciate your approval. Kylan?
I'd just like to say, thank you, Mayor and Council. If accepted, it would be honor and privilege to serve on this distinct board, Miss Tracy, and the existing board. That's all I have to say.
Do you have a guess, Devon?
Well, you don't see what the people just went through just now, and you want to go through that?
I give it its due diligence.
I make a motion, I make a motion to accept. Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wales?
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Welcome, welcome aboard.
Thank you again.
Number three, a resolution supporting the submission of a $51,000 traffic safety grant application for impaired driving, occupant protection, and juvenile underage drinking enforcement. Charles Forshers.
You guys have brief history. This is a grant that we routinely apply for. Every year, Highway Safety Commission makes funds available for overtime checkpoints for our police officers. There's an emphasis on DUI or DWI, drinking while driving, seatbelt use, car seat use. The other component of this is juvenile underage drinking, where you actually have juvenile detectives and officers that will go in undercover and monitor bars and restaurants, convenience stores, and make sure that juveniles are not being served alcohol. We're applying for, we applied for last year. I did have the opportunity to speak with our new police chief last week. He's, he's all for this, so I think we're all on the same page, asking for your consideration for us to go ahead and submit this application.
Pleasure to counsel.
Motion approved. Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wales?
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number four, a resolution supporting the submission of a $54,275 juvenile justice and delinquency prevention grant application to establish a voluntary intervention, support, and mentoring program for juveniles at risk of entering the criminal justice system. Charles?
To summarize that, this is kind of a diversion program. This is something that was brought initially to the Grants Department by one of our juvenile detectives, Lieutenant Jamie Hawk. We did, like I said, have the chance to sit down with Jamie and our new police chief and discuss this. This is something that he's very interested in doing. This is a grant through the Capitol District. Our state receives funds from the federal government through the Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Program. That money then gets allocated through a formula to the various districts. We belong to the Capitol District. At that amount, the $54,275, that's the amount that our district has been allocated. Their way of distributing those funds is to award one grantee those funds. There is currently a program that's in its second year of funding. The district expects that they will submit for a third and final year of funding, but that, that award is conditional on performance, and, and so they've got to demonstrate that they've been able to do the things that they said they were going to do. By putting an application in now, even though we're competing against this potentially other project that would get priority funding, we're letting the district know that this is something that's important to us. It's not a waste of our time. It gives us a chance to put an application together, get it in front of them, and then if we don't get funded this year, to reapply next year, so we're without foot in the door.
Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to submit. Second, that a motion.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wales?
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you so much.
Final adoption of ordinance. Number one, final adoption of an ordinance for a rezoning request by Plantation Management Company LLC to rezone Block 10 of the Barber Edition located at 800 South Oaks Street in accordance with survey of R. James Tatum dated 1/22/1998 from RM 2 to CN. Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to adopt. Second, that a motion.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wales?
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, a final adoption of an ordinance to adopt and establish a tax on all of the taxable property within the corporate limits of Hammond for the year 2019, as set forth in the agenda. Pleasure to counsel.
Motion approved. Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wales?
Aye.
Councilman DiVittorio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Introduction for ordinance and set for public hearing, none. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn. Second.
All in favor, say aye.